Okay, welcome everybody. I'm Scott Martin, President and CEO of Norman Chamber of Commerce, and we are really honored to have all of our guests and candidates with us this afternoon to explore some questions that are of importance to our members and I know the rest of the community. I want to lay a few ground rules due to the number of candidates that are on the ballot next week, a week from tomorrow. Then we end up splitting up the forums, so we have wards four, six, and eight with us right now this afternoon, and this evening beginning at 5:30, we will have five candidates from Ward Two with us. So we're really excited to be able to do this. Hopefully that allows our candidates a little bit more time to share their answers with us. I have prepared predetermined questions that none of the candidates have received. And just a little bit of the ground rules to begin with. We have a sound system in the room, and we are recording this via Zoom. Our goal, if it comes across well, is to publish this on social media, hopefully tomorrow, for everybody to be able to enjoy for a second time around, okay? But with that being said, I need all of our candidates to, and we only have one microphone, so we're going to be doing a lot of passing back and forth. Thankfully, we're not in time to cove anymore, so hopefully that doesn't matter as much as it used to. But we're going to pass this back and forth, and I need everybody to speak into the microphones, so that way our guests that may want to re-listen to the forum will be able to do that and hear all of your answers. Additional kind of ground rules that we're going to have. We, I have a myriad of different questions that I've asked, and I will do my best to rotate who begins answering each question, so y'all have a fair shot at answering first, at least a few times. You will be allowed two minutes to answer each question. We do that in hopes that you'll be able to provide some context and dive a little deeper than just, you know, having 30 seconds to answer questions. That being said, though, we do have the time constraint of two minutes. One of my team members, Melissa in the back room, she has two cards, as you can see, a yellow card, red card. So at a minute forty-five seconds, she will, if you make it that long, she will hold up the yellow card. I think you have fifteen seconds left. At two minutes, she's going to red card you, okay? And I need you to cut it off in two minutes. At the end, we will allow enough time for each of you to have a sixty-second closing statement. Same rules will apply, with fifteen seconds left. If it's yellow card, when your minute is up, she'll show you the red card. So with that, let me introduce our city council candidates. I'm going to dismiss with the normal intros from the candidates, and we're just going to jump into the questions after we introduce our candidates. From Ward Four, we have Helen Grant and Judy Moss. From Ward Six, we have Jerry Drury and Josh Hinkle. And from Ward Eight, we have Scott Dixon and Kyle Pearl. Please help me welcome all of these candidates. Maybe at the end, during your closing statement, you may want to mention how they can get in touch with you. Okay, so we're going to jump right in to the first question. And Helen, we'll begin with you as far as answering this, and then we'll go down the table, and we will jump into the next question, and Judy will begin with the next question. So regardless of where you live or what you do, homelessness is arguably the most discussed issue in Norman. So let's begin with three questions concerning this issue. The first is a simple yes or no, and I guarantee you will have more time than the follow-up questions, the two follow-up questions dig a little deeper. So don't fear that by answering yes or no, you're not going to have a chance to explain yourself and your position on the issue deeper as we get into this. So first question is, yes or no, will you oppose further extension of the Gray Street Shelter?
No.
No.
Let me make sure I understood what you asked. Ask it again. Will you oppose further extension of the Gray Street Shelter?
I will oppose it, yes.
No, say fine in yes. Say fine in yes, party.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'll hold one of that. I'm going to talk loudly, and you can repeat the question.
Okay, great.
So, versus yes or no, what should happen to the Gray Street Shelter?
The question is two minutes.
Okay, great. So the question is, what should happen with the Gray Street Shelter? So the reason that I said that I would oppose any future funding of that is that I do support a 24-hour shelter. I do support the home-based study. If you're not familiar with that, that is basically what we're working on as a community that basically kind of gives us the roadmap for how we can attack homelessness. And so I do support having a 24-hour shelter. That is one of the things that our partners, you know, at Food and Shelter, at Center of Clubhouse, Community of Care, what they all advocate for. And I believe that is the direction that the council is currently headed right now. So the reason that I oppose any future funding to that place is, one, it's a terrible location. I think everyone agrees that it's not a good location. That was just something that, you know, the city tried to do, and I commend the city for, you know, trying to have some sort of shelter, and it's only overnight, so we do not have a 24-hour shelter. But I would not put one more penny into that. I think what the council is currently working on is finding a different location, and that's the big ask right now, you know, for the community, is finding a different location. It was on the agenda a few weeks ago for, you know, a land purchase agreement, you know, north of the Justice Center up on Franklin and Flood. And so that kind of got postponed for a little bit, so I'll be curious to see where those conversations go. But the other thing is that, I mean, the facility that's currently over on Gray Street is just not adequate. So I would oppose any future renovation of that, but I do agree with moving it and funding it for our shelter.
With regards to the Gray Street Shelter, I would close it down, just for the simple fact that it's creating havoc downtown. It is, and it's just, it's creating so much havoc for the business owners and managers, patrons that want to go downtown, so I would close it.
I wouldn't support any additional renovations to the Gray Street Shelter. The facility is not, it was never meant to be a 24-hour shelter in the first place. So we're going to put those kind of resources towards making that solution to unhoused people off the streets. We should go ahead and go forward and choose a facility that we can build in a suitable location that's more compatible with one of our main business districts, as well as have the services that will be beneficial to the people that come into the facilities. I've mentioned for wraparound services for people like having ID offices where they can get access to state ID cards, birth certificates, social security cards, which are documents that become obstacles to mainstream services for food vouchers, housing, medical care. So things like that are things that are within our control. And I'm glad that we have a warming shelter for unhoused to use as it is now, but I agree that I don't think it's compatible with downtown Norman, and I wish that we could find another location to make a better facility than the one that we're kind of just putting band-aids on right now.
Well, to tell you the truth, I don't think we should be in the business of taking care of having a shelter like that. The county is what is, should be obligated, and I understand that they are obligated, to fund that and to do that. We just can't afford it. Ever since we started that, we've done nothing but caused more harm. We've got more vagrants that are coming in, and I want to make it, let you know, there is a difference between vagrancy and homelessness. I think we ought to be able to help as many people as we can, but no matter where you put it in Norman, it's going to be a problem. And I really don't think that's something that the city should be investing in. We need to be investing in organizations that are geared to help. And I know fifty, and I've got a list of them, there are fifty different organizations that do a very, very good job at that. Now, don't get me wrong, as a minister, I care about people. I've been in that position when you had to stand in line and ask. I know what that feels like, and I believe in having a safety net. But I really don't think it's the city's business to get involved in that, because ever since we have, it's caused nothing but trouble. And where are you going to move it to? The problem's going to fall with, right? If we have one in city, if we fund it, then we have to have one in city limits, all right? I, I, there are some really good ideas that are out there. I want to explore those ideas, but I really don't think we need to be the ones financing it. We need to take those funds and invest them in other areas that will help the homeless and not attract more vagrancy.
I also oppose to putting any more money into the Gray Street Shelter. I have an entirely different vision for that property. They're in recovery and owed in downtown, and what I see for that Gray Street location is to, we have to try to ask specialists out, of course, but to sell that building to someone that can develop some really trendy apartments and stuff for the young professionals in our town. We want to be able to retain them. That would be an ideal location to develop that sort of thing. And also taking, develop some of the other area around Main Street, and just make it a place where not only do people want to come and eat and shop, but to live and work and play. There's beautiful ideas for Andrews Park, and how can we, you know, want to pour money into the location that just really needs to be torn down and something better put in that spot is a good spot. So let's think about that sort of thing, driving the rest of the area around the downtown area.
On February thirteenth, I will be voting yes to actually remove the asbestos and renovate the inside, which will expand the capacity to about a hundred, which is great, because we turn away about ten to fifteen people every night. And there are some people who don't even try to stay at our shelter because they know it's at capacity every evening. Also, I will say that in the future, when we're able to transition the emergency shelter over into a 24/7 permanent shelter, we envision a group like Engage Learning that does STEM education and enrichment for children who are at risk, a place to actually have that opportunity to store their equipment, which they currently do in garages all throughout Norman, where in other communities, they're actually welcomed into schools and given space to operate. And I think since Norman is the home base of Engage Learning, yeah, in the future, we could have a building for even somebody like them to operate in. And I plan to see more art come to that building. With the criticism that the city wasn't good neighbors, the boarded-up windows were before my time, but the city manager and Parks and Rec and our Norman Arts Council were great, and with synergy, we have taken down, replaced the boarded-up windows with actual glass and put beautifying local art, and supported local business, because that was a local vinyl company that printed that out and installed it. Thank you.
This being such an important topic that we're talking about, I just want to make sure that everybody has adequate time to share additional thoughts. So the last question in regards to this issue is long-term. Have you proposed to address homelessness in Norman? And I know some of you somewhat mentioned that in the previous answer, but if you have any other thoughts, here's your opportunity.
This is where Judy first, yes.
The first thing we need to do, we need to quit referring to our builders and our developers and our homeless as public community number one. This is something that's got to stop. Now, we, we have been looking at the way people give, and the way people give today is different than what it was when it's our day. Most of the giving is given by the builders, the wealthy people. And to be quite honest, some of those wealthy people are builders and our general helpers, and they have lost interest in putting money into Norman because of the way they've been perceived and treated in our city. So if we could just, you know, put aside the stereotyping of builders and developers and also the homeless and work together with that, and so I think that would be a beginning. I talked to one of the person that's been very generous in the past in Norman, and he says basically he's lost interest in Norman. And he's not, because he's not quite giving. He's giving, he's giving to other areas. So we need to try to bring that type of thing back to Norman. Jerry mentioned the fifty or so agencies that do help the homeless services. They need, they need donors, and that's why they're kind of tapping into city's funds for the first pay for some of this stuff is because they're not, people are not giving like they used to. So if we could just, you know, show some love, I guess, to our people who are the generous givers.
I have a list here of fifty. These are, this is a resource, this of fifty organizations that are dedicated to help the homeless. I think that we need to find solutions. One solution is coordinate all of these together so that they can work together and work with each other. I think that we need to identify the homeless that are here with a card, ID card. Back in seventy-three is when I graduated Southeast High School, and some of you remember, we had some major riots. One of the ways that we stopped that was identifying all the students, and they all had cards, and if you didn't have that card, whatever. There are other solutions. We need to focus in on those that work. Now, now, think about it. Before we started taking care of the homeless the way we are right now, we didn't have the problem. And if we don't do something about it now, no matter what we do, as far as new businesses, new people coming in, when they walk up and down the street and see what we're seeing right now, we're crying out loud. Last week, my wife was in Walmart and coming out at night, and there were things that scared her, you know? This shouldn't be, what we're doing right now is not working. It's time to stop it and do something else. There are other organizations that work well with one another. Just take our money and invest it into those things and clean this up again. If anybody, I mean, we're crying out loud, I'm a minister, I care about people. I have been there, and I've felt that, and I know what they're going through, but we need to be able to help those who want help and quit handing things out and encourage you more and more of this.
So now, the issue of the unhoused is not something that Norman faces alone. It's county-wide, it's countrywide, it's statewide. Everybody feels it, every community feels it a different way. We have, it's true, we do have agencies that are dedicated to helping unhoused in our community. We have a city that funds those agencies through community development block grants. I've been a member of the Social and Voluntary Services Commission for a number of years. That's the city commission that helps fund those grants. We read all the applicants from those fifty different agencies and understand what they're applying for and what means they look to allocate those monies to put the help in. But when I say that Norman doesn't face this alone, we need to reach out and become better partners to our county, to the City of Moore, to the City of Noble, to the other people that, or to the other entities that we exist with here. Just as the county seat, we get a lot of the traffic, but we also need the resources from them because our city doesn't have them alone. From my experience, I've done the point-in-time count for a number of years when we go out, we wake up early in the morning, go out in the cold, and we interview the people that are in encampments and the people that are housed and the people that are sleeping in their cars. And there's a number of reasons why those people are here. There is a, whether mental health consumers are addicted to drugs or whether they've been misplaced because they came for a job and the job wasn't here. There's, there's a lot of different reasons why people find themselves unhoused, and the agencies in Norman are, can be very tailored to those reasons and help them move along. In order for us to really make a dent in the unhoused issue, we're going to have to be the club music game with the county, as well as find additional funding for the agencies to provide that support, because they're really, they have very limited resources as it is.
Okay, so long-term, I would like to see some money used in the community development block grants to help people stay in their homes. It'd be cheaper for the city to help keep people in their homes than it's going to be to get them, once somebody becomes unhoused, and get them back housed again. So that's one thing I'd like to see us do. Another thing I'd like to do is to see the city partner with Norman Public Schools. They're early on in a program called Community Schools. It's where you basically bring a licensed healthcare provider and a pediatrician, even a pediatric dentist, into the school system itself to serve the kids that are there, work on things that could help break the cycle with these young kids so that they do have a fighting chance once they graduate from Norman Public Schools. It's a, I'm not doing the program justice the way I'm describing it now, but it's saving services to the kids who need them. There's a lot of kids that never have the chance to go see a mental health provider, rarely will they get to see a pediatrician, but hopefully if this community school program goes through, it'll happen. And I think that's one way to really kind of, for a long-term solution, is to really help these kids out. That's it for me.
So before I get into short-term and long-term solutions, I mean, I do believe, and this is, I think we all agree that we would like to see less unhoused on the street, you know, let's get them off the street. You know, I think how we go about that, I think is where, you know, we will differ. I believe that this is a city responsibility. I believe this is a county responsibility. So I do think that moving forward, I mean, I would like to see a better collaboration, better working relationship with the county, as some people have mentioned, because, I mean, it is, it is our responsibility to do something about it. I'm not saying that we should be in the business of getting people, you know, from being unhoused into housed. There are a lot of great nonprofits around here that do that, but I do believe the city can help with funding as well as some infrastructure to assist, you know, our nonprofits out there. Short-term, let's move the shelter, okay? As I said before, from Gray Street, it's not in a good location. Downtown business community has said that to us loud and clear. Second, a lot of people are concerned about, you know, safety. Let the police chief do his job, which he's doing instead of enforce the law. They've increased foot traffic down there, so I think that's, I think that's a great idea. I think long-term, I think we need to do more things, such as what council has already done a few months ago, which is to partner with developers on developing low-income housing, you know, for folks. The best cure for homelessness is to prevent homelessness from occurring to begin with. I would also like to see, we'll probably talk more about a Norman four or two that's kind of on the cusp, and so I'd like to see Norman do what Oklahoma City has already done with MAPS Four, which is more than fifty million of that going towards assisting the Homeless Alliance Association and other nonprofits in Oklahoma City. And, go ahead.
Hold the map up for this question.
Yes, the question was addressing homelessness. Obviously, I'm going to be for continuing to follow our home-based study and action plan, which was coming up in our December, an oversight, we went over the progress of all those points. I'm also looking for quality jobs. That so, that home-based study said that it takes seventeen sixty-two an hour to afford a one- to two-bedroom apartment in Norman. Recently, the Oklahoma Policy Institute released an article that says you need now, in 2024, eighteen dollars an hour to afford a two-bedroom rental, or anywhere in Oklahoma. We would also encourage collaboration between the state, the county, and the city. With the county, we need to look at how people are released from jail and if they're following the best practices outlined by Southern Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, AKA Sansa, which has people getting their IDs, as was mentioned before. And we also have a Sarah Stiff Act of 2021 that says people should have their ID. It will not be real ID compliant, but there are other things that are obtainable that would help people leaving jail get set up for success, folks. As the Sarah Stiff Act is written, its pretty weaknesses, obtainable doesn't say will have. We need collaborative case planning before people are released. We need a warm handoff, and this isn't just the problem with the jail, it is also a problem of Griffin Memorial Hospital and other healthcare providers that lead people to the streets to wander to find the next place they need to be. And a part of the home-based study action plan is having good transport. To that end, on the city, we are doing a day labor ban that would help with the continuum of care and also more transport. They need medication, timely access to medication, plus the more people are going to overdose when they leave jail, it's fifty point three times more likely, day services, Section Eight, interhopping, all the things to fill in the gaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, we're going to start with you on this one. Norman is expected to grow at a rate of 1.5% over the next twenty-five years, reaching over one hundred eighty-five thousand people by the year 2045. We are not on pace to have housing for that growth. In addition, housing experts recommend we not focus on any one kind of housing, but rather encourage all forms of housing. How do you propose to address our housing needs?
Let's do all we can to increase it. I mean, there's a lot of good ideas. We've got a good heart here in Norman. We want to see Norman to grow. Let's look at the experts that are out there who know what they're doing, listen to what they're saying, and then address the city council to listen to what they're saying and do what is necessary to accomplish that growth. We also need to realize that we need to also grow in our waste departments and our fire departments. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's involved here. But Norman has a good heart, all of us do. We want to make a difference, and we want us to grow, and I can't help but keep going back to the homeless situation, because no matter what we do, when they come down and start driving out down the streets and seeing what's going on, we've got to stop that, you know? I don't care why you keep getting back on it, because I think until we get this fixed, the rest of it, it's kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. I believe in growth, I want to see this grow. We have got such a community already. We've got a fine college, we've got a great cultural, we've got museums, we've got parks, we've got so much to offer, and we need to listen to those who want to develop this and look at ways that we can help them grow.
Okay, thank you, Scott. You said 1.5% and one hundred eighty-five thousand by 2045? Okay. So I think in order to reach those goals, we're going to really have to start looking at different types of housing. We've had some city council people who were successful in abolishing the mandatory parking minimum, so we have lots of concrete deserts that could potentially be unfilled in our retail areas now, like the Crest Park, a lot of anybody's ever seen that thing. There are lots of different ways that you can build that type of housing. You can have single-family housing, you can have multifamily housing, you can have mixed-use development, like what's on East Village, on East Lindsey and 12th Street, where you have retail on the bottom and apartments on the top. There are a lot of different ways that you can reach those types of housing. And luckily, in Norman, we're blessed with some amazing home builders, multifamily builders that really are dedicated to building quality projects like that and making affordable housing opportunities in Norman for people that are looking for them. My biggest concern with it is we need to figure out our water infrastructure before we can really get going. If we're twenty thousand houses short of where we need to be, and we're trying to get to one hundred eighty-five thousand people by 2045, we're running out of water as it is right now. Our wastewater, stormwater, all of those different things, we're at a kind of a standstill with our agreement with Dell City and Midwest City, and the way that we get water, the way we get extra water, and the water that we purchase from Oklahoma City is just not sustainable, and the water that we get from our flood reserves is cheap. But again, that only happens when there's reserves. So lots of different ways to get So, lots of different ways to get to that number through multifamily, mixed-use, but we're going to have to really concentrate on some infrastructure, because right now, we don't have the water to support that group.
One thing I would like to see would be the allowing of the accessory dwelling units. That's just a pretty easy, quick way to increase in density, especially in core Norman. That would help. Like Scott said, it, it's all levels of housing that we need. It's not just any, not just one set. I'd like to see some smart growth. So we, we're definitely going to have to figure out our infrastructure as we're growing. It's that we're definitely currently have a stormwater issue, mainly in core Norman. We're going to figure out our drinking water out of Lake Thunderbird, and different wells, whatever we can do there. I think the, the, the easy one is the ADUs. Everything else, we'll have to listen to the experts. We can't keep open developers in the eye and then ask them for favors. So that's really kind of, would be what I would do.
Okay, working, answering the question now, I, I think some folks have kind of touched on this density. So let's think about the things that council actually has the ability to impact. So, so when we started talking about R1, R2, R3, we talked about mixed use. I mean, that's been mentioned before. So I think we need to get more creative with, you know, or work with developers on zoning. Infrastructure, that's one of the big things that council, you know, can impact. And so, and that is multi-cassid. So let's start with streets. We've got a lot of bonds out there, we've got a lot of projects that are occurring, but I'll just give one, for example, because we'll probably talk about this later when we talk about University North article. We talked about 36th Street Northwest Expansion. And so that has been sitting around for 11 years, 12 years now, since we voted on that. And so, and the city's been working on that, but we do need to work on making sure that all of our road infrastructure is correct. I love the idea that our, what we're working on right now with Flood connected to James Garner, that is getting better accessibility to downtown from Flood, from the north part of town. And so, and Josh already mentioned about it, you know, with water use and stuff. But we're going to have that many more folks we need to reexamine. And AIM is doing this right now. So if you're not familiar with that, but with AIM Group, they are taking a look at, you know, our future plan for water. And we'll, and we'll probably talk about that a little bit more. Quality of life, if we have all these folks coming here, we want to probably try to keep people here. So I think having more Norman Ford initiatives, and Norman Ford 2, I'll probably mention that a few times today. I think that is important. I think we need to be job-friendly. I mean, if we have all these people who are planning to be here, we need to have jobs for them. And so, setting up the environment of being a job-friendly town, I think, is extremely important. And Norman Public Schools. And so, do they have the capacity also, of course? Even though it's not a council per view, but I do think being a good partner with Norman Public Schools and seeing what needs they have for our growing population.
Question was, how are we going to deal with this future need of housing? Well, I also agree that we need to support infrastructure, and I support indirect equitable reuse. I would also respect and support the work that comes out of Subcommittee on Stormwater. We need to develop the stormwater utility fee, and I hope people who want to see affordable housing can get behind that. For affordable housing and the creation of it, we are talking about TIP District Master Plans right now. And in certain places in the country, some people suggest, or have actually passed 30% of their TIP going towards the creation of more affordable housing. Other things that TIP could help current residents not become homeless or gentrified out of their neighborhood is the Neighborhood Improvement Fund. And same for our Small Business Improvement Fund, for our local businesses that have existed for a long time that may not be able to compete with bigger name retailers that would come in when an area is being redeveloped. We also need quality info. People are concerned about Norman changing, and they also care about affordable housing. But when I hear about Norman changing, what I hear is people concerned about the character of neighborhoods that they live in, being unrecognizable. And quality info development through pattern zoning is an excellent way to put housing types back into the community that match the neighborhoods that they would go back into. ADU ordinance, I've been working on that, and we are pushing for it to be passed in March, and it will allow by right in R1, people to have a 650-square-foot tiny home, max. Or, because again, we don't have a stormwater utility fee, if the tiny home pushes the lot over 65, 65% in previous coverage, then they wouldn't get to have that. So, again, stormwater utility fee. We're also revisiting short-term rentals and what we might do there. Intentionary zoning would also help prevent the concentration of poverty by asking developers to do 15% of their new development as affordable or below-market-rate housing. Thank you.
But I think we're all in agreement about the ADUs. That is a good idea. We also don't need to do things that stop any momentum, stifle our growth, or show the same for our business community. The developers that I've talked to are really interested in, especially, especially in the neighborhoods where I live, which is original Townside, and then adjacent to Forest Courthouse and Silk Stocking, the older neighborhoods. We have some empty lots. They're interesting, working with Habitat's of Humanity, developing affordable housing in those areas. You know, like I said, we're all in agreement with the ADUs, but we need to stop doing anything that stifles growth and, and showing the same for any of our, our business community. That's, I think that's key.
I think Jerry's going to wrap it up. We'll start with this, we'll start with this one. Sorry, yeah.
Okay. Josh, we're going to begin with you. Norman is blessed with many distinctive business districts, such as downtown, Campus Corner, and Brookhaven Square, to name just three. As a city council member, what would you do to support all business districts in Norman?
I would take them to Chambers Credit Card and say, "Everybody, go have fun." You know, we, we really do have some great business districts here in Norman. They're all unique in their own special ways. They all have events, Brookhaven Jazz in June, downtown Art Walk, and Norman Music Festival. There's just all sorts of things that tie into Norman. Norman is open for business. So as a city council person, things that I would look to do, to just help businesses, I would really like to look at street closures before we take on those things, because we saw on how, we saw with Lindsey, West Lindsey, how the street closures really impacted the business there. And that's something that hit, hit close to home for me, for several of my friends that own businesses. So I definitely want to make sure that that's part of review as we look to keep the businesses that are in Norman open. I would love to do a business improvement district, which I don't know how many people are familiar with that, but it allows four areas for business districts to kind of create their own version of a homeowners association, for lack of a better way of explaining it, to where they can put money in, and they can use that money as basic benefit to make improvements to the area. And I think that giving those businesses the opportunity to kind of take more ownership of the way that the city around them is viewed is going to be beneficial to creating more districts in Norman and bringing more people from out of town to make Norman more of a regional draw than it already is.
I would sit down and listen to the various groups, say the Downtowners, the Campus Corner Merchants Association, whatever Brookhaven calls theirs. Listen, and just see what their needs are. Talk to them, work with the Chamber of Commerce. Sit down and just, you know, listen, see what the needs are, and then try to develop a plan of action to help them out individually, or as collectively, and then kind of promote that, and then sell it to the council, and see if we could get things, whatever, get things going, help them out wherever they need. But it would be, sitting down and listening and collaborating would be, would be my approach to it.
Okay, so Josh, thanks, you stole my business improvement development. I have that written down. But yes, I would definitely support a business improvement districts. We did try one a few years ago, and so, and that requires, for those of you not familiar, I mean, Josh mentioned it pretty well, that it requires more than 50% of the property owners around there to say, you know what, we want to go into this. So it's going to be the business owners. And so, and then council would either approve or not approve that. So, anyway, that was, that was looked at a few years ago for downtown. That was ultimately, it didn't approve, but I would definitely support that. I mean, I think the first thing is shop local. And so I think one of the things as a, as a city council member, I think, is having a social responsibility for promoting small business and local business. And I think that, I think that helps out quite a bit. Get on social media and promote things, and not just say, hey, you know what, go to this place. Actually go and visit that place and see what those small businesses need to do to promote. Because we've seen a lot of stuff, those of you who are, you know, on social media here, we've seen some things here recently about certain local businesses that have shut down. And so I think that when businesses are saying, hey, you know what, we're in trouble, I think Norman does step up and, and tries to do that. I think some of the things is just thinking about, more about events and creative type things that bring people into town. And so I think working with our arts district, I love having Norman Music Fest. I, I think that does a lot for downtown local business. Having our art walks, I think, and being able to, not downtown Norman, I think being able to replicate that in other areas, I think that would be really good. So, does the, does the council do that specifically? Not necessarily, but I think working with the chamber, working with the arts community and, and other groups, I think will be beneficial to local businesses.
Yes, the question was how to better support business districts. I agree about a business improvement district. And for clarification, the downtown one did not last the support at city council, but the county pulled out, and that was the major property owner. But again, it should be actually something that non-government property owners push for, because ultimately, it will be helping their tenants attract new and recurring business. I've worked downtown, so next to bars, and I can tell you that some of the patrons aren't always nice and tidy when they leave. Also, TIP District Master Plan, cannot say that enough. I envision multiple business districts thriving in Norman, and a TIP District Master Plan is a huge part of that. I also think it should be funded through the participatory budgeting, because while we have identified, like, Lindsey and Noble Parkway area, you know, I, and work for, don't actually live over there, and I would love to hear from that side of the community what they want. Do they actually want lighting, facade work? Maybe they want affordable housing to redevelop some underutilized concrete. For downtown, I've actually talked to a business owner who is in the 400 block of Main, and wants alley work, crosswalks, parallel parking, lighting, and trees. And while I don't think the general fund can support an expenditure like that, the TIP district can. We also have TIP districts over center city, which will help with some of these improvements. We know that Campus Corner has a successful TIP district that did public improvements. And these don't have to last 25 years. They can just literally support some smaller projects and done. Thank you.
So I guess the first thing we need to recognize is there's so many different aspects to our business district. For instance, if I want to go buy a new dress, I'm probably going to go on the west side and buy a new dress. But if I want to have a nice meal, I'm probably going to go downtown to some of these wonderful restaurants we had. If I want to go and hang out with some of the young professionals who are going to school all year, that I'm trying to attain, and see where they want to go, I'm going to hang out at Campus Corner. So each one of our districts is so unique, we need to pay that attention to that. I am also supportive of a TIP master plan, but I think it needs to be coordinated with the NEDC and the chamber. I'm not a fan of participatory budgeting. That seems time-consuming, seems chaos. It's just not a efficient way to do things. You know, you, 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 OSCN is leaders for a period of 10 years. And we are trying to, you know, do the will of the people, but you have to trust us with that, and it's not opening up to participatory budgeting. I think it's just, it's asking for chaos. And so, I would say that we would have a well-defined TIP, each to follow, not let it be a social engineering tool, and, and make it a good TIP. Do it through the voters, if they approve, do the plan, work the plan. Simple as that. So that's what I feel about.
Well, just along, you need to know what, what their needs are. You know, we, we've got our, well, let's look at it this way. As a city council, we've got the clout and the power to do a lot of good. But unless we talk to the people that are in, in these different areas and, and listen to them, what needs to be done, what will help you, better lighting, better concrete, better whatever. Once we hear that and, and see what they need, then it's our job as a city council to use our clout to make that happen. Because let's face it, they, they want to survive, they want to improve, they want to make it easier and more fun for the rest of us. I mean, that's what it's all about. But unless we listen to them, go and talk to them, and, and, and learn firsthand what needs to be done, then it's our responsibility, the city council, to take the clout that we have and make that work for them.
I think, back to me, right?
Hey, further this discussion about business districts, with successful business districts, that means increased sales tax generation for the city. Sales tax is a primary source of revenue for cities in Oklahoma. So what is one city policy to drive sales tax generation and growth for Norman?
Scott, I'm here with you.
I mean, ways for them to increase sales tax? It's going to be to attract young professionals here. The more young professionals we can get here, the more people starting their families here. You know, they'll be able, you know, spend their money here in town. We need to be pro-shop local, which I believe most everybody is. We just need to kind of, I can't think of any just specific silver magic bullet that would do it, but just a, just an overall pro-business approach to the council as a whole would really help out. Just anything we can do to attract young professional families.
Okay, so sales tax, we use a lot of the sales tax, you know, it goes into our general fund, it goes into capital funds, it goes to public safety sales tax. And so it goes back into paying the things that we need to run the town. So, back to you, how can we use sales tax to go back in and really connect? How do we reinvest in ourselves, which will then turn out more sales tax? So I think probably the biggest thing right now, said already, Norman Ford. And the things that are bringing folks here, when we talk about quality of life, I'd like to talk specifically about net new growth. So, February 19th, if you want to come out, 10:00 AM for the art, unveiling at the Young Family Athletic Center at 3:30 for the grand opening, that is a new facility here that is going to bring net new growth. That came from the 0.5% sales tax that we voted on in 2015. And so what that is doing for us, and there's some other things that don't necessarily, are not necessarily revenue generators, such as Ruby Grant Park or Flood going to James Garner, as I mentioned before. But I think anything that we can do that will bring in net new activities, such as Norman Ford projects, I think the Y-PAC is probably the best example. I think we should invest in.
The question was supporting the generation of new sales tax. I would say higher wages. When people have disposable income, they actually go out to eat and shop. Again, affordable housing. When people aren't cost-burdened by their rent, 50, 60, 70, 80% of their income, then they have money to go out and shop, watch movies. We also should be mindful of how we do TIPS. And in our TIP District Master Plan discussion last Thursday, we talked about, we don't need to do 100% of a sales tax for 25 years. We could do 30% of the sales tax in increments, this TIP district, to put towards whatever projects that community deals will help them thrive. We also have an internal auditor making, and she proposed that she go through and make sure we're actually collecting the tax that we're owed. Because guess what, not everybody remits their sales tax. And I would say too, with short-term rentals, we're re, I'm And I would say too, with short-term rentals, we're re, I think we're signing a new contract with a company that will help us collect that guest room tax, because again, there are jobs out there that not needed. Thank you.
One of the things we need to do is protect that sales tax and how it's been spent. If there's problems with how it's been spent, we need to plug those holes, we need to do that quickly. The auditor, she mentioned, she's going to be looking at all that before we have been spending our sales tax money. And I think we're going to be shocked if some of the places that money is going is wasteful and is not well spent. So one of the things I would say is just, let's keep an eye on that sales tax and see where it's been spent. If it's been wasted, we need to stop that.
Being responsible, that should be a duh, you know? With the sales tax that we have, we are responsible and you are giving us the responsibility of making sure that we are spending it right, we are using the resources that we have to bring in more people. What we have right now is a city that is growing, that we're capable of attracting and we are attracting new businesses, new people coming in, whether it's colleges or museums or our special events, all of this stuff comes together. But, and the more we do this, the more we attract, the more taxes come in. I mean, that's just a given. But our responsibility as a city council is to make sure it is being reinvested wisely and not with some of these crazy ideas that are out there that isn't helping us at all. And it's just being a good steward, it's being responsible, it's being where people can trust you. It's not about me or anybody else, it's about all of us together and to be a good servant. And that's the bottom line. A good servant is someone that serves the people that are around them, being responsible with the money that we do have coming in, looking for new ideas to bring in more money. And the best way to do it is having a city that people are attracted to. Wouldn't it be great if people looked at Norman and said, wow, I'd love to live there. I want to find a way to live there.
So I believe the question was if we can create a policy?
So one policy that I think that we need to create right away is we need to create a position within the city of Norman that goes out and looks for high-paying manufacturing jobs to bring them to Norman, like what we have with Hitachi, like what we have with Johnson &amp; Trolls. Those types of jobs bring people, they earn higher wages. Fill that with some affordable housing where people can start their families here in Norman and you're creating the sales tax base that you want. I think Norman has an absolutely fantastic retail director in Sarah Kaplan. But if we had an individual that was able to represent the city and also work hand-in-hand with the chamber and the Norman Economic Development Coalition, I think that that would go a really long way in not only meeting these goals that we have with reaching 185,000 people by 2025, but really hanging on to the sales tax that we have. Additionally, with those higher-paying jobs, you get more houses, you get your enrollment in your public schools start to fill up, and that's how you get a city, that's how you build a community. I think that along with those other things, we need to continue to look at bringing in conventions. We have soccer tournaments, we have the really great opportunity with Sutton Soccer Fields, with the Young Family Athletic Center to bring in basketball tournaments, there's all sorts of tourism with the museums, with the university, and definitely with the athletic events that we have. Those are all things that bring sales tax to Norman. And the S E C move, I think, is a really great opportunity for Norman to capture a lot more of that revenue as we, like I said before, become a regional draw. And with our quality of life initiatives, Kyle said Norman Forward too about eight times, and I think that that's a really good opportunity because quality of life initiatives help people stay in town. If you want to retain young talent, then you have to have things for them to do, places for them to live and start their family, and quality of life initiatives for them to enjoy in their downtime. Thank you.
Okay, next couple of questions are dealing with TIPS. I'm going to love this one. So, access to government financing districts have been successful in Norman, on Campus Corner, in University North Park, and in others, and in the Center City. So much so, council, we discussed, he said why the TIP master plan. Would you support the use of TIPS for development in the other areas of Norman? Keep your answer short, and then we will get to that Norman Forward two question that Kyle was talking about. And that's where we're going to start.
Move forward to, you want me to say it again? Yes, I love it. So I think Councilmember Grant talked about this before, said it's a certain TIP master plan, you know, being developed at the last, at the last block of meetings, so Business and Community Affairs Meeting, I mean, they talked a whole bunch about TIPS. And so I think TIPS absolutely do have a great purpose. So yes, I would absolutely support the use of TIPS in other areas of town.
Do you want to, Scott, you want to take that and then you answer?
Sure.
Wrap up the development, we're going to start TIPS.
Yeah, absolutely. I've seen some drawings of the preliminary TIP master plan for the city of Norman. It's, you know, over at Griffin, just kind of all over Norman, I 100% before that and supported any way that I could.
Yeah, I also am a supporter of TIPS. I think that they can be a really great tool for developing the city. A lot of the improvements that we want for businesses and growth that we look for can really be accomplished with TIPS. And those are also funds that can be paid for by people that visit us versus something like a general obligation bond, which really would be something that all of Norman has to pay for.
I agree, it's a great idea. That's going to be an incentive to bring in new businesses, and that's what we want to do. And yeah, I'm 100% for it, I think it's a great idea.
Yes, I also am agreement of a TIP master plan. I really would like to see is, you know, use a TIP in East Norman, along the 12th Avenue, Northeast, Southeast, Robinson to Lindsay. That area has kind of gone down by the wayside and really needs to be revived. And so I think that a TIP would be a good way of doing that.
Well, obviously, as one of the council members who, in the August 2023 retreat, was pushing for a TIP district master plan, the short answer is yes. But also, I didn't mention that we're going to need a TIP to buy the rest of Griffin. Currently, we have $60 million earmarked for a down payment. And some of you may know that we had $1 a year lease agreement with the state that then transitioned over to $800,000 a year with the idea that we would be purchasing Griffin. So yes, opportunities for multiple districts throughout Norman thriving, I see it in a TIP district master plan is the ticket. Thank you.
Okay, with each of your supports for a TIP master plan, let's talk about the current TIP proposal that's being discussed right now. From your understanding of the proposed University North Park Entertainment District, what are your thoughts on the project and where you support it?
I will just say the short answer is no. And the longer answer to that is, I could have been supportive if 100% of the sales tax for the next 25 years had included the development of affordable housing and also a site plan that had mixed-use commercial on the bottom, housing on the top. None of that has been materialized, so I'm not supportive of it. And additionally, when the OU Economic Forum panel was asked, what would you do with 200 million instead of publicly financing arena? Which FYI, they let us know that the S E C schools, majority of them are privately financed their arenas. Since they're not deep in city business, maybe they don't know that Norman actually has staffing issues throughout all our city departments. And when we talk about having a beautiful Norman, just remember that we don't have enough workers to go do the plantings all over Norman, from the beautiful interchanges that came through on Lindsay and May to downtown. Our parks director took me by Lindsay Berry area and was like, oh, if I just had a few more people. But that's not the only position. We also talked about a right-of-way manager, I believe in community planning, a transportation committee, a position like that to make sure that our right-of-ways have compliance from the utilities and other contractors that work in them. There was a gentleman who was stuck in a gravel pit because he was trying to use the sidewalk that O U C N had not put back concrete, and thus he got stuck. With the right-of-way manager, we potentially would see less of these issues and faster compliance when they arise. Thank you.
And like I said, I am all for collaborating and partnering with the other agencies in our town. And this, this plan is provided by N E D C, OU, Chamber, Team Norman, Visit Norman. These are men and organizations that got together for a long period of time, worked hard, put their heads together, came up with a plan. Why aren't we trusting these people? I mean, they're experts, we're just, you know, saying what do we want, what we don't want. But I believe it's time to do collaboration, do partnering with the people who know what they're talking about. And so at first, I wasn't sure, you know, the arena park is the least appealing to me, but if the people in O U think it's a good idea, but honestly, it's not. So I think that it's a prime example of what can, we need to do as far as collaborating and partnering with the other agencies in our city.
Boy, you hear a lot of pros and cons. What I've heard so far, but I, and I do like everything that has been brought up, but then again, you hear the other arguments about Lloyd Noble and going that direction. Until we hear both sides of it, it's really hard to make a judgment on it. What I have heard so far, I'm supporting it. If there's other things that come up that we need to look at, we need to use some common sense and work that out too. I mean, for us to say, hey, I'm for this, you know, well, only a fool would judge a situation until he, unless he's heard both sides of it. And we really need to look at both sides. That is the responsibility of the council, the city council. And I want to take that very seriously because what we do affects all of us. We are all citizens. And I am a citizen just like you, not a politician yet, I guess it's fixing to change. But I am, I'm one of you, and that's the reason why I'm running right now. I, I want to be a voice, I want to be the voice of our communities to be heard, and I want to be somebody that can be trusted. And I think that's what we're looking for. And unless we look at both sides of it and look at all of the situation, and then we can make a final decision.
So I've looked at this through the lens of our economic people, I've looked at this through the lens of our developers. I definitely understand the arguments coming from both sides. Some of the things that I think about this is it's really important to refer to it as an entertainment district and not just an arena, because it is so much more than just an arena. One of the things that I was kind of disappointed with in the site plan that came through, I didn't really feel like the housing options had the density that was promised in the plan that they said. But those are all things that can be negotiated if the city has some skin in the game. I think Norman needs to put itself in a position where it has an entity that wants to invest $800 million into our city, then we need to be all ears and figure out ways to work with that entity to come up with big things for our city. And additionally, Norman's in a really unique position because we, if we do get an entertainment district with an arena, we'd be really fortunate to have wonderful anchor tenants in the top 25 men's basketball program, historic women's basketball program, and both men's and women's gymnastics that are number one in the country right now. Those are things that drive tourism and visitors, especially, you know, when it comes to sports and things of that nature. So I guess the jury's still out on whether this is going to end up being a great deal or not, but I think that if we have an entity that wants to make that large of an investment into our community, then we need to at least, that's it.
So the first thing I did after hearing about this was start reaching out to people to learn more about it. I've met with OU Athletic Director, I've met with CFO of OU Foundation, met with the mayor, met with N E D C on it. I even reached out and talked to a guy in Lincoln, Nebraska, who was behind the haymaker, kind of their entertainment district with an arena. This will be a wonderful thing for Norman. Right now, I mean, it's just dirt, it's not generating any money to the city nor the county. We have a chance to transform it into something magical. Just everybody I've talked to is 100% behind making it the best deal possible for all four of the entities involved. So I just, I think it's a no-brainer. I do understand the people that are against it, I do understand some of their arguments. I don't understand all of them, but yes, I'm for it.
Okay, so the short answer, because we're talking about the TIP for the entertainment arena inheritance, so I will say, short answer is yes, I do support using a TIP up there. Long answer is, it's, it's a very unprecedented TIP. So getting into the specifics about it is that it would be re-appropriating 100% of the future sales tax and 100% of the ad valorem for 25 years to go into this TIP fund that would help repay, you know, the arena. There isn't anything out there, there aren't any other TIPS out there that are appropriating or redirecting 100% of all future revenues. Now, it's not gaining, I mean, there's no sales tax out there right now, there's no property out there right now since it is a blank land. However, there is an arena, there's Lloyd Noble Center right now that does generate sales tax. So if we move that sales tax generating venue to University North Park, and now we are re-appropriating said sales tax dollars, my question, you know, is going to be, is the difference, are we going to be able to make that up? Because now we're actually losing sales tax dollars. So again, I think, I would like to see just a little bit of a tweaking, you know, of the proposed plan, but I do support using a TIP for that, as Josh mentioned before. And we have private entities coming in here wanting to invest 800 million. I mean, I do think that from a city perspective, I mean, I feel comfortable with us saying, hey, you know, we do want to put some skin in the game to that as well. And I think that net new, I think that'll be a good plus for Norman.
Okay, utility franchises are operational agreements with the city, which solely address access to easements and right-of-way to benefit, to the benefit of the utility customer and provide benefit to the city's general fund in multiple millions of dollars. The Norman Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors has voted to support the franchise election for O U. Will you be joining the Chamber Board in voting yes to approve the O G and E franchise on March 5?
Okay, this is our opportunity to follow the law. The Oklahoma Supreme Court and the Oklahoma State Constitution mandates a franchise agreement. This agreement does not affect O G and E service area that is determined by the state. The rights are not also regulated by, the rights are also regulated by the state. This agreement does not address issues like underground lines, tree trimming, or use renewable energy. It's about allowing O G and E access to public streets or right-of-ways for the purpose of generating, distributing, and settling trysting. The Oklahoma State Constitution mandates that franchise agreements must be approved by the qualified voter. We cannot continue permanently to use permits in the, of a franchise agreement. Permits grant O G and E access to city easements for necessary infrastructure work, but does not extend to private property. If an issue occurs, like a tree affects pipelines in a backyard, O G and E must seek approval from the property owner before restoring, restoring service. This takes time and this can get delayed in the restoration of our services.
What she said. I like that, I really do. I like that, I really do. Um, and of course we want to support the Chamber and there's a lot of wisdom that's there. And I have a tendency to kind of lean towards which the Chamber is recommending. And, uh, but then again, Judy was saying, there's a lot of wisdom there too. So I, I pretty much agree with what, what she just said.
Uh, yes, I would support the Chamber in the charter agreement with OGNE. I think OGNE has been a great partner for Norman for a long, long time. Uh, we need to give them the ability to maintain the infrastructure that we have to keep our power online as we continue to grow and we want to make sure that we have that partner as we continue to build new homes and new businesses and make sure that we have street lights and power to the city and power to our water treatment facility and all of the things that they provide. And OAC really wants the charter agreement approved too, which if OAC says, and they should, you should vote for OGNE, then that should tell you something.
I'm 100% in alignment with the Chamber Commerce Board of Directors on this. It's, we're the only city in the state of Oklahoma that hasn't approved latest franchise agreements for OGNE. A yes vote's an easy way to signal to businesses in the rest of the state that Normans friendly, we're easy to work with, uh, we're open for business. A no vote's an easy way to let people outside of Norman know that Norman's difficult to work with, you don't want to come here. So a yes vote is the easiest yes vote in the history of votes. Thank you.
Judy, very well said. I couldn't have said it better. Uh, I feel like you work for OGNE, so I feel like that is the exact same speech I heard in my Rotary Club. So I voted for it before, I will vote for it again. Uh, and I think a lot of this is initiatives. I think people don't understand exactly what this is about and what it's not about. Um, so this is about access, they have to do this and, um, yes.
Uh, it's an interesting question because I completely worked for overwhelmingly voted no. And I'm not very confident that WorkFor will vote yes on March 5th. And some of the feedback I've gotten from the community is what happened to the listening sessions from OGNE with residents and what came of that? Is it amendments with this franchise agreement that address the tree canopy, undergrounding of lines, renewables, and a five-year review committee to go over OGNE's commitment to those amendments? Um, those amendments are coming forward with this, so I believe WorkFor voters will see the lack of that and have a lack of confidence. Um, also, there are many WorkFor voters that are angry with the petition signature gathering process and the misinformation presented to them to get their signatures. Um, I heard from many people that they were told that if they signed the petition that their energy bills would be lowered, uh, they would get green energy into the community. None of that is true. It's just the same OGNE franchise agreement that voters voted down in January 2023. Um, we'll say no, guess what we want? That remains unclear. I don't think we've gotten very far. Uh, where we're at is that OGNE operates month to month in the right of way. Uh, they get to go in during emergencies, we have a working agreement and we still collect the fee. And I imagine if voters overwhelmingly across the city say no again, we'll continue that arrangement. But are there other ways to get undergrounding of lines, um, better care of our tree canopy and canopy and renewables? Yes. Um, and also the five-year review committee, I would hope OGNE would want to talk to us about that and actually get with citizens so that as we work on 25-year agreements with large entities that our citizens feel like they're heard. Um, I would say too, Oklahoma Municipal League has cities that also want to come together and to lobby Corporation Commission about OGNE having an underground, uh, burial line long-term plan. Thank you.
Okay. You've all been great. We have one more question, Kyle.
Yes, sir.
Before closing comments, but we're going to start with Jared. Sorry. Norman Forward! Public infrastructure initiative was adopted in 2015 to fund quality of life projects with temporary one half of the Senate sales tax. What would be your top project in Norman Forward 2?
Here, you start.
Now, you've got to remember that, uh, up until about three months ago, I was just a pastor in, in a church and, and a federal citizen. And, uh, every now and then something gets thrown at me and I'm going, gee, that's, that's a good question. Why me first? And I'll be honest with you. Until again, I, I see the situation, you can see what it's, what it's all about, I'm not going to bull smoke your way and say, hey, we did this and everything. And, and I, and please, I'm, I'm a very simple person that likes to look at simple answers. I, I keep hearing different ones here that go on and on and on and on, you know? Uh, let me look at the situation, let me see what's going on and fully understand it before I can give a public comment on it. But that's just common sense, wouldn't you agree? I will get some kids like this. You guys remind me of my congregation at times, but, uh, that's the best answer I can give you for right now. But I'll comment here, but I will research it. I will do the study that needs to be done and, and make the right decision for all of us.
So I think, uh, the Norman Forward projects that we've had really bring a lot to Norman as far as quality of life initiatives go. I think our three libraries minus the one that's closed right now for the, when it's open, it's still amazing. Uh, the new senior center that just opened is absolutely incredible. Um, I thought that that would be probably not open until I needed it and now I need somebody to take me there so I can come out and check out all the cool stuff that's there. Um, the YFAC in partnership with Young Family to do the Young Family Athletic Center, I was there on Friday night, it was absolutely wonderful. So, uh, things like that, I really think show the power of what a Norman Forward type initiative can do, uh, really making the quality of life better for Norman. Uh, one of the things that I would really like to see if we were to do another Norman Forward, uh, would be to make Sooners Theater a more viable venue for, not only for our kids, but to host other events too. Uh, I think that just the funding that it's had for a while has not been enough to really make it, um, as special as it could be. And I think we're missing a lot of opportunities there to have, uh, sort of that municipal theater that really becomes a part of our community. Uh, additionally, I think if, if we couldn't go with the public safety sales tax, if it were possible to, uh, work in some new infrastructure for the police department to potentially get a new state-of-the-art police facility, uh, using quality of life money, I think that would be a really good idea. Uh, we are, our police are in competition, uh, for the best facilities, for the best equipment, for the best people to come, go through our academies, uh, with Edmund and more in our surrounding communities. So for us to have a, a state-of-the-art facility that we kind of became a beacon for, uh, recruitment, I think that would be a really great thing to have as well. Thank you.
So I was very, very disappointed when the Norman Forward 2 stuff didn't pass a few years ago. The first thing I would do would be to finish the YFAC as it was originally designed. Uh, right now, we don't have enough courts to host the Nike showcases, uh, the youth showcase tournaments. If we can do that, these restaurants and hotels near, around here are going to be full. We're talking about the, the next LeBron, like the, the high school version of LeBron James. Their teams will be company in Norman if we can host these events. The second thing I'd like to see finished, we, we got the, the T-ball fields, uh, but out at Reeves Park, the, uh, youth baseball, youth softball fields, uh, really, really could use a, a refreshing with the Norman Forward 2. And as the president of the Norman Optimus Club, we do a lot of youth sports here in town. My kids are straight up recreation kids. We, they're, they're not club level kids, they're not select kids. We rack at my house. The amount of money that is spent on youth sports, um, those ball fields, these basketball courts are huge economic drivers for our town. If we can, if we can get them done properly and professionally, we can host huge tournaments and get people in from all over the region, all over North Texas, uh, as far as Kentways, Kansas City and Wichita. These people will travel and they spend money when they show up. So I would really like to, to finish those two, uh, projects as originally designed. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, you asked for one, I'm going Rogue and I'm going to do four. So I think that with Norman Forward 2, I'm really excited about all the possibilities, uh, you know, this has to offer. What I would love to do is I would like to see something that does a number of things at the same time. So I recently, you know, had the opportunity to sit down with Visit Norman and so one of the things I found out is that tourism is the number three industry in the state of Oklahoma. So if we're able to do something that is both tourist attractive, but also the quality of life initiative, which is really where Norman Forward started and the main purpose of it, then I think all the better. So I think there are some possibilities that are already being explored. Uh, having a weather museum, I mean, we are at the heart of terrible weather and so, well, Los Angeles right now and San Diego, that means bad. But I mean, we, we, we have, um, I mean, the, the National Storm, uh, Center right here. So I mean, having a, a weather museum, there would also be some sort of an experience for folks, I think that would be fantastic. Having mountain bike trails, you know, around, say, uh, Lake Thunderbird, having a master plan for Lake Thunderbird. So these are things that not only are quality of life initiatives, you know, for us, I mean, gets people outside, gets people moving, but also are attractors for us. And then the last one I had on here is, uh, some sort of an Epoint venue, I know that is being explored as well. But if we're able to overlap tourism, which brings people in, helps our sales tax dollars, and quality of life, which helps Norman citizens, I think all the better.
Yes. Norman Forward 2. Well, as the current council member for Ward 4, I'm going to say the Andrews Park Master Plan, uh, without lines in that, plus a little extra for art, which actually Norman Forward 1 allocates 1% towards public art. And I would like to see that carryover into Norman Forward 2. Also, to be clear, Norman Forward 1 is done and council can put that on the ballot, um, towards the end of Norman Forward 1, we have some overlap and begin on Norman Forward 2 projects. Um, interim supportive housing, somebody mentioned OKC and MAPS 4. Uh, we need interim supportive housing and I kind of think what OKC did with renovating a hotel for permanent supportive housing for veterans is a great idea. Um, especially when we think about our veterans coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan and complex post-traumatic stress disorder and other issues they might be dealing with as well. Um, our arts community, I've been talking with NEC and the entities under the umbrella and they want a professional class arts and culture center where entities can, uh, office if they're a nonprofit and also have studio space for practice. Um, we also might consider the weather experience, AKA weather museum. We did talk about Govons for them, uh, for seed money, but we could also see something like that in Norman Forward 2. And additionally, I would like to think about Norman Forward 2 on a PEGO system where maybe we wait a few years before we begin a project so we can save long-term on interest and other expenses that we, uh, incur by going faster. Thank you.
Well, Kyle, I also feel like we need to do some development out of, uh, Lake Thunderbird. Uh, before I moved to Oklahoma, I lived in the rural, uh, Cleveland County and, uh, I thought, you know, I wasn't going to miss the wildlife, but boy, I sure did. I, I, we had, uh, a lot of cattle around us that were birping or calves and, oh my gosh, it was so wonderful to watch them falling in play. So if we could develop something around the Lake Thunderbird area in the way of, uh, the drawing, uh, tourist attention over there, I think that, that would be, you know, wildlife related. And also, I'm a femme, so I would love to see the femme industry be developed here at Norman. Uh, our Sooners Theater, of course, you know, needs to stay because it's a, it's a historical site, but maybe some, uh, venues, you know, for, for, uh, femme development, uh, that's what I, that's my quality of life, you know? If I wanted to have a relaxing evening, I want to watch a femme, but wow, to go and see it live, that would be just like wonderful. So I'd like to see those developed, the femme industry and also the, uh, the wildlife tourism at Lake Thunderbird.
Okay. We've come to your closing statements. Just a reminder, 60 seconds for closing statement and Melissa will hold up the yellow card with 15 seconds left. We'll pass this on down the table here. Kyle, we're going to begin with you and Helen Ball.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Scott, thank you, Chamber, and thank you everyone for joining us today. Um, I think that, uh, several things. So one, let's, let's move through homelessness. Let, let's get that addressed because there are so many good things happening in Norman and so many good things that can happen in Norman. And so let's all come together on what we need to do to address homelessness so that we can talk about building our infrastructure. Uh, when Scott says, you know, 1.5% growth and we're going to have, you know, way more in our population, we need to get ready for that, just like we need to get ready for SEC. And so, uh, I'm no stranger to community involvement, being a member of the Norman Rotary Club, having graduated from Citizens Police Academy and, uh, Durham Citizens Academy and also working for Norman Regional Health System, uh, for 24 years. So I'm glad to be a part of this community and I thank you for your time. If you want to talk later, I'm at hurleyfornorman.com or I'll be hanging around. Thank you.
Scott, uh, Chamber, thanks for having us. Again, Scott Nixon, Ward 8. Um, just want to say that I've been endorsed by the Norman Police Department, Norman Fire Department. I'm pro-business, pro-smart pro, pro-law and order. I'm looking forward to listening, collaborating, leading with you. Norman is such a wonderful community. I know sometimes in these forums, if you just get to hear about all the negative things, all the problems to be fixed, but my goodness, this is such a wonderful community. My wife and I love it here. Got a 13-year-old, a 10-year-old. Um, he's 13, he doesn't like anything, so I can't say that he loves Norman. Um, we love it here. This is where we're going to, we hope to retire here. Um, just really looking forward, um, to helping, uh, serve the residents of Ward 8. Thank you.
And thank you again to Scott and the Chamber for hosting us today. Again, my name is Joshua Eagle and I'm running for Ward 6. Uh, I was born at Norman Regional Hospital and now I live in Sutton Place, so in my 40 years in Norman, I've made about two blocks. Uh, so I'm really proud to be a Normanite. I'm a fan of the service of my life. I'm actually a member of five chambers of commerce. I, I understand the world that chambers have in our community and they support and drive the economic growth that we look for, especially in which we should capture, uh, sales tax and things like that. Um, so I'm, I'm a graduate of Leadership Norman, which is the Norman Chambers Leadership Program that they do. Uh, I went on to graduate from Leadership Oklahoma, so I understand how, uh, policies and things work into cities. Uh, and I look forward to being a voice of experience, uh, and knowledge from the things that I've done for the residents of Ward 6 and look forward to representing you. My website is statekinkward6.com.
To begin with, I support new business growth. I support moving the homeless support to the private sector. I want the fire and the police department to be fully funded to the point that they are enticed to stay. Uh, if we can make it where they feel the support, they got the finances, uh, to stay here, that's going to attract even more people to come this way. We need more police officers, we need more, uh, fire departments, uh, people. And we need to make it where they are profitable and safe. Uh, I will work with our city leaders to promote public safety. Uh, I want to prioritize and plan ahead for the maintenance and for the improvements of our city and to avoid raising taxes as much as we can. I will listen to the voices of citizens in Ward 6 because I am also a citizen. I, I want to be your voice and, and, and be who I am too. Uh, I will work hard. Thank you. Oh, I didn't see for a long time. I'm sorry.
So this, I'm Judy Moss, running for Ward 4. 405-317-1199. JudyForNorman@gmail.com and JudyForNorman.com is my website. I do have a lot more, uh, information concerning some of the issues that were talked about tonight, but with time constraints, I wasn't able to cover everything I'd like to cover. So if you had any questions, please feel free to call me, reach out to me by either phone call, email, uh, Terry Page.
So if you have any questions, please feel free to call me, reach out to me by either phone call, email, uh, Terry Pigeon, it doesn't matter. So, um, I'm always going to try to do the right thing if I, you know, I'll be prepared, do my homework on each issue. I'll try to be honest and straightforward. I'll honor the oath that I will take as an honor flag in our citizens. And, uh, so I wish you'd, uh, vote for me because I think I can do some good. Thank you.
I'm running for Ward 4 again. Uh, to finish, to actually push more of what I started, which was affordable housing. That town hall we had, it really took the misinformation and rhetoric out of the community so that when we got to November of 2023, since we're, we didn't have any protests at pre-development planning, you know, it's not our first or second ordinance, and we passed Affordable Housing 90. I also care about pattern zoning and having quality info with development that preserves the character of our neighborhoods and gives us equity, because you don't have to be a third-generation developer to take, uh, advantage of the savings that pattern zoning would give you. You have permitting through the city, and you've been picking, uh, housing plan from a pattern book. So really, all you have to think about is your financing and construction. I care about inclusionary zoning, the ATU ordinance, strong neighborhoods that are organized against bad development, and preserving place-making. Um, noise ordinance update, also working on, and that tip district master plan. Uh, this is just the tip of my sprig on that. Thank you.
Let me thank all of our candidates for being here. As a reminder, the election is next week, Tuesday, February 13th. Polls will be open at 7:00 AM, close to 7:00 PM. You are, I encourage you to vote early and in person at this Friday or Thursday and Friday, February the 8th and 9th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Cleveland County Election Board, More Norman Technology Center, South Payne Campus. And I believe they even opened up a site, Noble Public Library, I think. Anyway, I think that's the case. Appreciate all of you coming out again this, assuming our recording went well. We will repost and we'll post this on social media tomorrow. Uh, if you would like to, please stay, stay and join us for the Award 2 Forum. It will start at 5:30. Thank you so much.